I would like to advise all those present that notice of this regular meeting of December 13th, 2023, has been provided to the public in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act of the State of New Jersey. Notice of time and place of this meeting has been included in the annual notice of meetings, which was posted and filed with the city clerk and with the Jersey Journal and the Star Ledger. An additional notice of time and place was posted and filed with the city clerk and was forwarded to the Jersey Journal and Star Ledger on December 8th, 2023. The regular meeting of the Municipal Council of the City of Bayonne is now in session. Ms. Medina, please call the roll.
Mr. Booker?
Here.
Mr. Carroll?
Here.
Mr. Perez?
Here.
Ms. Weimer?
Here.
Mr. La Palusa?
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, one is an ordinance of the City of Bayonne amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter 37, Historic Preservation, which was introduced and passed the first reading at the meeting held November 8th, 2023, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of December 13th, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution giving the ordinance second reading is moved by the council president. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
And on the second reading resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance of the City of Bayonne amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter 37, Historic Preservation. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. No protest against objections to or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
So move.
Second.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage?
So move.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Can I take a one point of?
Sure.
Just for our young listeners in the audience, I don't know if you're going to be here all night, but our first item right out the gate was declaring something a historical landmark. And I, I'm sorry for being a nerd, but I'm a history teacher. So this was one of the cranes that was associated with building the PT boats that President Kennedy drove in the South Pacific and he was actually, that his boat was blown up and he had to swim with the survivors to a local island. He was rescued seven days later. But this is one of the cranes because those boats were built at one time in Bayonne. So very happy to pass this.
And what this ordinance does is it, this was placed down in the park, I believe around ninety, excuse me, 2006 or so, 2007, and the city is taking ownership. So if it needs to be later on down the road, if there's a question about maintenance or mostly maintenance, the city has ownership of that and we would maintain that. Because it's right now sitting in the city park called Ruckowski Park. And I'll vote aye.
Okay. And oh, two is an ordinance of the City of Bayonne, County of Hudson, State of New Jersey, approving a financial agreement buying between the City of Bayonne and 63 New Hook Road Urban Renewal LLC for the property located at 63-67 New Hook Road, which is identified as Block 416 Lot 3, as shown on the official tax map of the city, which was introduced and passed the first reading at a meeting held November 8th, 2023, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of December 13th, and is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution giving the ordinance second reading is moved by council member Perez. Ms. Weimer, will you second?
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance of the City of Bayonne, County of Hudson, State of New Jersey, approving a financial agreement buying between the City of Bayonne and 63 New Hook Road Urban Renewal LLC for the property located at 63-67 New Hook Road, which is identified as Block 416 Lot 3, as shown on the official tax map of the city. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. No protest against objections to or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
So move.
Second.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage?
So move.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Oh, three is an ordinance of the City of Bayonne, County of Hudson, State of New Jersey, approving an amendment to the financial agreement buying between the City of Bayonne and 746 Avenue E Urban Renewal LLC to extend certain timelines for the property located at 746 Avenue E, which is identified as Block 393 Lot 3.01, as shown on the official tax map of the City of Bayonne. This ordinance was also introduced at the meeting held November 8th, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of December 13th, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution giving the ordinance second reading is moved by the council president. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance of the City of Bayonne approving an amendment to the financial agreement buying between the City of Bayonne and 746 Avenue E Urban Renewal LLC to extend certain timelines for the property located at 746 Avenue E. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. No protest against objections to or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
So move.
Second.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage?
So move.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Oh, four is an ordinance of the City of Bayonne amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter 33, Planning and Development Regulations, which was introduced and passed the first reading at the meeting held November 8th, 2023, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of December 13th, and is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And the resolution giving the ordinance second reading is moved by the council president. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter 33, Planning and Development Regulations. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. No protest against objections to or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
So move.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage?
So move.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Oh, five is an ordinance of the City of Bayonne approving an encroachment agreement buying between the City of Bayonne and 746 Avenue E Urban Renewal LLC for the property located at 746 Avenue E, which is identified as Block 393 Lot 3.01, as shown on the official tax map of the city, which was introduced and passed the first reading at a meeting held November 8th, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of December 13th, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution is moved by council member Perez giving the ordinance second reading. Mr. Booker, will you second?
Aye.
And a resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance of the City of Bayonne approving an encroachment agreement buying between the City of Bayonne and 746 Avenue E Urban Renewal LLC for the property located at 746 Avenue E. And the council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. No protest against objections to or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
So move.
Second.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage?
So move.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Oh, six is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter 7 Traffic, which was introduced and passed the first reading at the meeting held November 8th, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of December 13th, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution moved by council member Perez giving the ordinance second reading. Ms. Weimer, will you second?
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter 7 Traffic. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. No protest against objections to or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
So move.
Second.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage?
So move.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Oh, seven is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter 7 Traffic, which was introduced and passed the first reading at the meeting held November 8th, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of December 13th, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution giving the ordinance second reading is moved by the council president. Mr. Booker, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter 7 Traffic. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. No protest against objections to or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
So move.
Second.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage?
So move. Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Now, we come to our public speakers. Our speaker is Mr. Solari.
Good evening, counsel.
Good evening.
I have a couple of issues here. In November 9th, does the meter, the parking authority give out tickets to just certain people or to everybody? Because again...
Any offender, right?
Okay, well, I was parked in front of City Hall and the sweeper comes and she passes up three cars, a van, and two trucks in front of City Hall. All right? I was on the corner and I got a sweeping ticket. All right? I'm going to tell you right now, I watched her give it to me. Okay? Because I've been watching this for the longest time. Okay? And I went four blocks down and I waited for her to come and I said, how come those three cars didn't get the sweeping ticket? Oh, there wasn't nobody there. Don't tell me because you just gave me the ticket. I watched you. Her face dropped. What they do is the fireman parked there and we all know it's the fireman because it's the two trucks and their own private vehicles, not the city vehicles, private vehicles. And they got the van. The van parks illegally over there, don't get no tickets. They don't get no meter tickets and they don't get an illegal ticket.
The van is a private vehicle also?
Yes, it's a van, it has his own, his own business on there. It's a business van. And it's there all day, all day. So I, this is where I'm going to ask you again, does the parking authority pick and choose who they want to give tickets to? Because that is a problem in Bayonne. Because they'll give business people tickets, they'll give cops that'll park there with their own private cars tickets, but firemen do not get tickets.
I will address this though.
You know, so maybe you could look into that and then you could get back to me, Mr. La Palusa.
Sure.
All right? I'd like to thank Public Works for over the summer. They did a great job up at City Line there cutting the grass. I never had to go up there to ask them to do it. They were there. And, you know, it looks, looks fantastic up there. But the only problem still is when are we going to pave that area? That is like, like Beirut. You gotta go through every hole. I mean, it doesn't pay for Public Works to go there and keep filling holes when we could just read...
But you're talking about Route 440 specifically?
Going to 440, right from the McDonald's all the way on down.
Okay.
You know? Mr. La Palusa, I know you do work for the county. I've been calling the roads up there. There's a big pothole, I mean, near the gas station of the Boulevard of the BP.
BP, 53rd Street?
63rd Street.
Oh.
63rd Street, up at City Line there. It's there.
Okay.
I, it's spread...
You're talking to the right people, I'll get, I can get that.
Well, I, I didn't want it to bother you this afternoon because, you know, lunch hours go fast.
Yeah.
So, you know, so that was it. But I just wanted to let you know that that's been there, it's marked out in a circle with a, with a white line so nobody, you know, and on 54th Street, there, they only filled one side, but they didn't do the other side right next to the, right next to it, right next to it. They only paved one, but they didn't...
What, are there more potholes?
Yeah, it's another one there.
And that's on what road?
54th and the Boulevard.
Okay.
54th and the Boulevard, you know, but...
I'll have somebody inspect that tomorrow.
But I, I'd like you to get back to me on the parking authority.
I will.
Why aren't they issuing tickets to them out there? They stay there all day, they're not supposed to be feeding the meter. The only reason why I'm really here is because the poor guy had to park a block away and he was walking with a walker, a walker. Okay? And those firemen don't feel ashamed? You know, I mean, come on.
Mr. President, I, I can't really speak.
It's not, it's not, I could see if they were here on an emergency, there was a big fire somewhere, they had to just park anywhere, absolutely not.
Lord, you want to add something?
Yes, real quick, Mr. Solari, good evening. I, we know each other for quite a few years. My question is here, how do you know it's firemen? And my point being is what proof do you have it's firemen? I mean, if there's offenders out there, granted, they should be addressed, but you can't just say they're firemen because you don't know for sure.
Fireman plates. Fireman plates. And, and wait before you even speak, Mr. Booker, I got there at 6:00 in the morning and there they are going into work.
Okay.
So that's the proof I have.
Okay.
All right? I could go out there right now and get the plates for you.
Mrs. Solari, another question?
Yeah.
Did you complain to the parking authority? Did you say anything to them?
I didn't, this is the thing now, I'm going to go, since you want to go into a little deeper now. I didn't go...
So I'm willing to give you a little more time, but wrap it up, please.
I didn't go, yeah, no problem. I didn't go, I didn't go personally in there, I sent somebody in there.
Okay, that's not the same thing.
Okay, all right?
Okay.
I was there.
Okay.
I was there, I was right there, you know, but, yeah, yes. And she said, she said they'll look into it. They'll look into it.
But you never got a call back.
Never got a call.
Okay, and, and please understand, excuse me, Mr. President, the fact of the matter, I'm not looking to debate with you. I just don't, I don't, I don't, I don't see it as if someone is being falsely accused. If it's firemen, then their situation will be addressed, but to just blatantly say for sure unless you have their plates, I'm just, I'm kind of questioning that. I don't want to see anybody falsely accused.
We're going to talk to the parking authority.
Not a problem, but you know what I'll do? You know what I'll do, Mr. Booker? I'll be here for next month's meeting with all the plates written down and then you could take it from there and you tell me then what it is then. I'm going to tell you right now, if you go right there right now, they're firemen.
Dave?
Yes.
Well, what I'm going to do is I'm going to address this to the parking authority that nobody should be, you know, there should be, if you are an offender regardless of where you work or what you do, you should be treated the same way as any other citizen.
That's all, that's all we...
So we're not going to go and point fingers that it was firemen or anybody else, and especially since it was November 9th and we can't...
Yeah, you know.
We, I can't prove what you're saying, but you, you understand where I'm coming from.
Absolutely.
So we'll, we'll adjust this.
All right, so I'll just leave you...
Is there anything else?
I'll leave you on that note, but before I leave, I just want to wish the, the council a Merry Christmas and a Happy and Healthy New Year to the families and everything and everybody be safe. Thank you.
You as well, you as well.
All right, you too.
Okay.
Ms. Goodman?
Good evening, counsel.
Good evening.
My name is Haley Goodman. I'm here representing Dimension Renewable Energy. I am here following up on Dimension's request for municipal support for some solar projects that we are developing in Bayonne or proposing in Bayonne. And Councilman Booker, hi.
Hi, I'm fine with you children.
Nice to see you, yeah, has been gracious enough to speak with me about this, so really appreciate your time there. I wanted to come in person to present a bit about our projects, the Community Solar Program in New Jersey, and then I'll leave the last two minutes for any questions that Program in New Jersey, and then I'll leave the last two minutes for any questions that the council might have. So, as I mentioned, Dimension Renewable Energy is the company I'm here representing. We are a community solar developer based in New Jersey, and Community Solar is a relatively new program in New Jersey. It is a state program commissioned through the Clean Energy Act of 2018, and the goal of the program was for the state to increase access of renewable energy and the savings offered by solar energy to folks who usually can't access it. So, that includes folks who don't own their homes, who might live in apartments, or don't have the capital to put residential solar on their roofs. Through the Community Solar Program, the state's program, folks in New Jersey can subscribe remotely to a project and receive a discount on their utility bill. So, through this program, they keep their same utility, P S E N G, for example, but through subscribing to a community solar project, they receive a 10 to 20% discount that is ongoing for 20 years, which is a lifetime of the project, and there are no fees associated with it. So, Dimension is, currently has eight projects in New Jersey, serving 2,300 households with, with guaranteed savings every month, and we are proposing two projects, they are on warehouse rooftops at 99 Hook Road and 99 Avenue A. These are not built yet, we, we are submitting, or hope to submit these projects to the Community Solar Program. A key part of our applications will be municipal support if, if the city council or Mayor Davis decides to provide it. That would look like a resolution of support, or a letter of support, saying that the city wants the benefits in, to come to Bayonne. Those benefits include, so our projects would serve around 1,100 local households, the annual estimated savings for Bayonne residents would be $307,000 each year, and that would amount to $7.9 million over the lifetime of the projects, and these would be built on warehouse rooftops that Dimension would build, own, and operate for their lifetime. Additionally, we are really invested in community engagement in the places where we develop our projects, so we have a partnership with Hudson County Community College, and should the projects be approved in the program, we would run a workforce development training there to train folks up to work on community solar projects, solar installation throughout the state, and those are high-paying jobs, they pay prevailing wage, so that's also another exciting benefit that these projects would bring. So, I'll pause there, I know I have about two minutes left, and if the council has any questions, I would love to answer them.
So, I would like to know, is there another source of energy, or is it all solar?
So, it is all solar, the program is specific to solar, and in New Jersey, it's stipulated that it cannot be on any gra, green fields, so all community solar projects in New Jersey will either be on warehouse rooftops or on brownfields, so old landfills, things like that.
And you mentioned the building of warehouses.
Uh, I might have misspoken, we're not building warehouses, we're building them on warehouses. And so, we do have signed leases with the building owners that are contingent on us being awarded space in the Community Solar Program.
And so, 99 Hook and 99 Avenue A, you've already spoken to and have signed leases to do this with?
Correct, that are contingent on, on project awards.
Well, welcome, uh, we've, we've talked, we've spoken a little while ago, I don't know how long you're gonna be here this evening, but again, we'll continue our conversation, please just call the office and we'll, we'll keep moving forward.
Okay.
Thanks.
Sounds good, thanks.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Okay, thanks very much.
My name is Edward Lefty Grimes, I'm with SativaCross.org, we're a 501(c)(3) here in Bayonne, advocating for disability access and cannabis patients. I want to touch on the other gentleman here, the area from McDonald's to 440 was actually being painted today, I don't know if you know that, I was like surprised to see, I actually laughed when I saw it, because I was like, wow, that's like the last thing it needed, well, maybe it needed, but it's kind of like you're painting over like these mounds of, I don't know, I laughed, it needs work, you're, you're absolutely right. This year has been very interesting, as far as my activism on Broadway and 49th, fighting for a traffic light for a blind person, we really need that light. The highlights of the year were the, uh, one guy spit on me, the sidewalk psych exam was great, uh, also, um, when I'm out there, when people are not paying attention to me in the crosswalk, I will actually put my phone out in an aggressive way to get their license plate number, and a lot of people don't like that, they'll actually beep at me or stop, and a couple of people turned around and asked me what I'm doing, and I actually explained it to them, and some people are like, oh, yeah, we do need a light for a blind person. So, I'm doing that one day, and, uh, I'm, I'm seeing a car come towards me, and I'm getting the plate, and it's like C-H-A-M-P, I'm like, oh, it's Chuck Webner! So, today, till I have to jo, I joined the elite group of people almost taken out by Chuck Webner, and that includes Muhammad Ali, so I'm happy about that, maybe Chuck can give me a call and help me create awareness for this issue, for stopping for pedestrians, because people are not stopping for pedestrians on, uh, Broadway and, and, uh, 49th. You may have gotten an email from one of, um, one of my friends, who used to live on that corner, she sent you an email, maybe you can read it today, uh, she talked about how dangerous that corner is, and how we need a traffic light for blind people. The, since I'm a taxpayer here, I don't want to pay for a light, a traffic light costs like $350,000 to like $800,000, it's a lot of money, um, so, if we're fighting for a traffic light for blind people, that's within our scope as a nonprofit, it's in our mission statement. So, if you know a way we can get some grant money to supplement this, and to get this traffic light for a blind person, that would be awesome, because we could, you know, get the grant money and put it right towards that, it's in our mission statement, as long as it's for a blind person, it has to be a talking light, that talks, like, wait, wait, wait. I was ignorant to that, I didn't know that was, that was for blind people, I was made aware of that this year, so, that's what we're fighting for, and hopefully we'll get that soon, hopefully, if you can reach out to me, we can get the grant money soon, I have my information here, I have a pamphlet here, uh, for information, we've actually won awards from the federal government, from the state government, for our work for the disabled people, so we are very serious about our help for, um, disabled vets, and this town used to be, uh, made for vets, it was, uh, there was a military ocean terminal here, so, we need to take care of our disabled vets, there's a lot of people that are thanking me, in addition to people yelling at me, I've had a lot of people thanking me, and, if you go to Angela's Hot Dog Place, they'll tell you, they'll tell, there's a petition there, I'm gonna bring it to you guys, and they'll tell you how many people have come up to them and told you about the, the accidents, that, two weeks ago, someone got hit, by the way, two weeks ago, a person got hit on that corner, I don't know the specifics of it, I'm gonna look into it, and there's been at least four car accidents this year on that corner, and a light would solve that problem, because a lot of people are parking in the, in the yellow areas, which makes it a blind spot for people, for pedestrians and for the cars, especially people that are going down 49th Street, sometimes they blow that light, they don't, they blow the, uh, stop sign, and that's what causes the accident on 49th, so, I appreciate you looking into this, and I have a Merry Christmas, everybody, appreciate it.
You too, Mr. Grimes. The, um, the light on Avenue C and 49th Street took a very long time, you know that.
Yeah, four years?
We pushed for that, yeah, well, we pushed for that, I'm very proud of that light, by the way.
Yes, thank you.
And, um, the one on Broadway, most of the parking is for Angela's Hot Dogs, because I also go there as well, I know those two nice ladies very, very well. I saw the petition taped to the wall, the, uh, the old printer paper was really funny to see you guys signing that, but, uh, with the holes in the sides, you know?
I'm old school, man.
Yeah, exactly. I would say this, let's let the traffic department do a study to see, you can't take people's word for it, that there were four accidents, I'm gonna have them do a little research, let's see how many turns and how many people are going down there, and if the traffic light is warranted, so, they're the experts, we're gonna deal with them first, and if the light's warranted, we'll push for it.
Great, thanks.
Have a good holiday.
Moving on, 08 is an ordinance proposed for introduction, it is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised German ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter 16 Rent Control, and a resolution fixed on Wednesday, it should be January 17th, not January 10th, as, at 6:00 PM in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers, there's a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. It's moved by the council president, Ms. Weimer, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker. Mr. Carroll?
I vote aye, but I just want to bring up something I mentioned at the caucus, which is potentially looking at future amendments to this resolution that might provide a, a sense of peace of mind to our residents, and I have some ideas that would provide latitude to the landlords and peace of mind and security to the residents as well. I, I don't think anyone up here needs to be visited by three ghosts, I know all our hearts and minds are in the right place, there were two ideas brought up by my colleagues at the caucus, which I think are excellent, there's a lot of tools at our disposal to help the residents with rent stabilization, I just think going forward, we ought to look into it, especially because we do approve this unanimously every year, so, I do so because I believe in the tenets of the resolution, and I hope that going forward, maybe we can all individually come together with some ideas that are mutually acceptable for this in the future.
Um, I'd also like to make a statement that later on in this meeting, there'll be a resolution that we have to vote on urging the Bayonne Housing Authority this coming year, in 2024, to look into providing new housing and using the money that the city would allocate to them to use, which is $8 million in the Affordable Trust. I spoke to John Mahon, who's the director of the housing, and he seemed pretty enthusiastic about doing that, so, this'll start the ball rolling, and, uh, all of us had great ideas, Jackie had some good ideas too, last week, uh, and so, I think that's the first step, so you'll see that towards the end of the meeting. Anybody else want to add to that?
No, I, I agree.
Okay.
I think there's absolutely a way to make it work, on the floor for, for all parts.
Absolutely, okay, thank you.
On the resolution, Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPulusa?
Aye.
09 is an ordinance of the City of Bayonne approving a five-year tax agreement with the building on B L L C for the property located at 140 Avenue B, which is located, which is identified as Block 84, Lot 6.01, as shown on the official tax map of the City of Bayonne, and a resolution moved by the council president fixing Wednesday, January 17th, at 6:00 PM in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers, there's a time and place for a public hearing and final passage, would like to second.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPulusa?
Aye.
10 is an ordinance approving a financial agreement buying between the City of Bayonne and Bayview LLC for the property located at 175 Avenue A, which is identified as Block 300.01, Lots 1 and 2, and 3, Blocks 301.03, Lots 2 and 3, as shown on the official tax map of the City of Bayonne, and a resolution fixing Wednesday, January 17th, at 6:00 PM in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers, there's a time and place for a public hearing and final passage, would like to move it?
Move it, second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPulusa?
Aye.
11 is an ordinance approving the financial agreement buying between the City of Bayonne and Bayonne Luxury Walkway, or Water Walk Urban Renewal LLC for the property located at 2, 211-219 West Fifth Street, which is identified as Block 301.01, Lots 1 and 6, as shown on the official tax map of the City of Bayonne, and a resolution fixing Wednesday, January 17th, in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers, there's a time and place for a public hearing and final passage, would like to move it?
So, move.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker. Mr. Carroll?
Director Skilander, would you come up for a moment? So, these two properties are essentially located next door to one another, and there's a lot of moving parts, I wonder if you'd speak for a moment on the infrastructure issue?
So, on the infrastructure hish, issue here, um, for both the agreements, in the RDAs that have already been approved, there are certain, um, financial considerations of public improvements that both developers, on the project that you just approved, or introduced, and then this one, where there have to be, um, you know, walkway, water walk, uh, walkway contributions, uh, traffic light contributions, uh, and then also, in dealing with the site plans, uh, they have to, um, manage, uh, you know, the stormwater and sewer capacities. Part of also this too, this would then, you know, the approvals of these projects would also help allow financing, uh, some of the other bigger improvements, um, that the city will help, um, with, um, to help some of the flooding in Cottage Street, so, there's a proposed interceptor that's, uh, being looked at and designed, um, by our en, uh, internal engineers at this, with a cost roughly estimated at $10 million, and that will help, um, add capacity and direct divert, uh, you know, some of the flows right now.
Say million with an M, or billion with a B?
Million with an M, you know, look, it's, it's a, uh, pump station upgrades, uh, but again, part of, um, for both of the, the projects that are, you know, being proposed right now, um, as, you know, part of their site plan, they have to show stormwater management, uh, again, something that the planning board and our professional engineers have already heard, this helps the financing aspects of these.
Does the function of one necessitate the construction of the other?
Uh, can you please explain that?
Sure, does the building of any buildings on these sites require the construction of that interceptor before, after, during, or within a certain amount of time?
Yes, and again, part of it is, there are cer, certain external governmental approvals, such as the Passaic Valley Sewer Authority, um, that, you know, we have to apply for a TWA applicant, uh, permit, um, part of that is just to make sure that there's capacity within our system, um, this, again, will help add to the capacity that the city has for it, so, there, there's other approvals that the developer has to go, and the, these are conditions of the site plans, uh, for resolution compliance.
And will also help out the long-term control plan.
Yes.
This will, uh, whatever money this provides, I've been told numbers of 16 and a half million dollars in different improvements and things, uh...
Well, for the long-term control plan, uh, I mean, I wish it was 16 million.
No, I meant, that's the improvement that this developer is making, so that will at least lessen what we have to spend on the long-term control.
That, on, on this one, just for sake of clarity, this is the Nassarima site, uh, the last one was Bayview, on that project, that one roughly is about 16 million dollars to 20 million of public improvements over the life, but everything is upfront. On this one specifically, it's, um, you know, the stormwater contributions that they have to put to there, the, um, the traffic lights, and then part of the, the walkway.
Okay.
Right, but Director Skilander, as I understand it, the, the projects that are going on in, in that area right now, those developers are paying a pro-rata share of those, of some of those improvements?
They're playing, yes.
Okay, so, I think what Councilman Carroll asked is, is the completion of those projects, is they're moving forward contingent upon those infrastructure upgrades being completed and approved, because, as I also understand it, the Bayview project already has their permit, so, we, we have, we have stated that right now, our infrastructure has capacity to handle that project?
Yes, on, for, specifically to Bayview, that...
Specific to Bayview, right, so by...
For Bayview, they have, we've already certified that they do have their TWA, that they do have sufficient capacity.
Okay.
Now that as other projects come online, such as Nassarima, uh, and again, this, this proposed interceptor, um, that, you know, in discussions with Councilman Carroll, uh, and myself have had, is roughly about a mile long from one side of town to the other, along North Street, um, you know, that's also going to, again, have, you know, our sewer lines tie into, um, other proposed sites, such as 26 North Street, some, you know, proposed development sites on, along Broadway, uh, you know, and, right now, it is, is in the initial stage of design, we have a preliminary design on it, uh, with rough costs of $10 million, um, so, to say that they're contingent, um, as a definitive answer, um, the answer is yes, on it, but, um, it also allows, again, helping some other areas of town, because this will divert, you know, the storm, stormwater, um, and sewer from Cottage Street to a different part of town, that will have the capacity in it, that our engineers look at.
Right, and, and what part of town is that being routed to?
Well, this would be, again, routed along, um, on the south side of Avenue A, uh, into the, um, improvements that, and the line that's being built at 90 Avenue A, so, on that part of the developer is, you know, get, you know, upgrading the line on there to, and you could see the, the casings that the new pipe will have, so, that it's being directed there, um, and, again, for our preliminary data, that has shown that, you know, there is capacity in that direction.
And do we know if any of these developers, if they're, so, to one project right now has their permit, they can move forward?
Yes.
Okay, the other several projects in that area that are also contributing, they're pro-rata share?
Well, on that, because each project is done on a case-by-case basis, for the analysis that, you know, our engineers have to do as a condition of site plan approval, I, you know, I don't want to speak on an engineer's BF without looking at the specific data on it, but that's our...
And I understand that, do we, do we know what that overall project is going, so, we have, we have people applying for permits that are contingent upon a contribution of a pro-rata share of a project, do they know yet what that estimated cost is going to be?
Again, part of this, you know, for, with the, the interceptor cost of it, it has been shared to the development community for their, that's as part of the financial terms for this on it, but there's also different ways to, as grant money comes available, again...
Defray those costs.
To defray those costs, also, again, with, um, you know, different utilities, you know, uh, the utility authority too, coming, the, these are different, you know, funding mechanisms, but again, these are all tied in to help address, you know, the long-term control plan.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm not opposed at all, in fact, I'm quite happy to see them making a contribution to the infrastructure. Um, my, my question is, are we going to get to a point where we're seeing it is, um, the long-term control plan is a multi-hundred-million-dollar, if not a billion-dollar prospect, but are we going to get to a point where one of these developers are saying, well, gee, I don't have the financing to make my pro-rata contribution, so now I have three other development projects that are being halted, because their progression is, is contingent upon that portion of the project being completed?
So, part of this, again, as they're, they're tying in, each of the developers, especially going forward, you know, uh, because these are being proposed developments, they have to, you know, in order for, you know, negotiating with the city and, you know, the community, you know, impact, you know, so, in some instances, we've approved RDA that have, you know, contributed money, um, you know, this is, you know, another way of looking at of, you know, a funding source of, all right, this is a project that the city has, and, you know, we've had, you know, we've done this in several other projects, you know, for park improvements, uh, you know, again, contributing, you know, in that. Because these projects, you know, are, you know, potential and haven't made in front of the board at this point, uh, or, sorry, the council, uh, you know, for redevelopment, or at least haven't had their redevelopment agreements approved, um, you know, the amounts of what they're contributing, again, on the pro-rata share, is going to be based on, you know, future discussions.
Maybe another way to get at the point of this is, do we have any idea as to when construction will begin or end on this new improvement, this infrastructure improvement? We've heard now the proposed total number of years that this other construction may take, and, and there's a few other ones here in that general area, do we know when and how, and have, have you begun the process of looking at when that's going to take place?
So, again, while, while, while we're in, again, on an overall city design project for this, just to, I know the conversation's, you know, gearing away from the, the topic that's, you know, being proposed for introduction, so, with this interceptor, the interceptor is in its preliminary design stages right now, you know, it has been looked at by our engineers, it still has to be vetted, you know, on, you know, the cost, you know, as other improvements are being done, you know, this is a project that is, you know, important, you know, to, you know, the city administration on this, to get, to help solve, but there's also other, you know, projects, um, you know, in the works of, you know, that you're aware of, you know, such as, you know, Cottage Street, some of the pump stations, you know, these are just lists of projects to help with, you know, the improvement of our aging infrastructure. So, Councilman Carroll should give you an exact timing on it, I think it's, you know, still premature on it, because there's still a lot more of the phases that have to be done to, you know, make this project a reality, but, you know, preliminary designs, you know, it's a $10 million cost estimate project of upgrading a pump station, putting new forest mains in there, and then, again, diverting, um, you know, some sewer lines for it, and then road improvements, uh, pavements. So, the estimated, you know, time that we're looking for this with, is, again, in the next, you know, two to three years on this, but, there's, you know, I'm putting a caveat on that, that we're still in the preliminary design phases of it, you know?
All right, so, when the doors open, where does the water go?
So, but again, right?
If this, if this isn't built?
But, each of the projects, and again, we're, we're talking about on the financial agreements for these, that is a condition of resolution compliance with the, the planning board, and then the building department, as they have to make sure that, A, they have a TWA permit, you know, for the sufficient capacity to what our current system has, and that is a question that our engineers, you know, work with Passaic Valley on, to, to make sure that they have the sufficient capacity to handle our sanitary, and then because these sites are on the water, you know, separating the stormwater, um, out of our system.
By virtue of being here on this agenda, they have that?
They, they have for Bayview, they do, for Nassarima, they're applying for it right now, but this is a financial agreement that's being proposed in front of the, for introduction. You know, and, uh, the lawyer for the project is here to speak upon it, uh, on the specific questions of, you know, where they are for the TWA permit.
Good evening, everyone, Matthew Passav, Sales, Commiss, and Gross, I represent the applicant, Bayonne Luxury Water Walker Renewal LLC. Uh, so, I believe the question is right now, where we are right now, the pending TWA permit, it has been submitted, we're waiting to hear back, that's where we are right now. I certainly understand the concerns about stormwater management, I can say as part of our contributions to assist... I can say, as part of our contributions to assist with the C S O system, we are going to develop an onsite holding tank. So, in the event of those major storms, we can actually hold the water onsite. This is the same theory and the same approach that was applied for the eighteen eighty-eight studios, which I was attorney for that project as well. We took the same approach, and we're doing it here on Nassarima.
Matt, your project, moving forward with your project, is not contingent upon those upgrades being completed?
No, not necessarily.
Right, so, you're, and that onsite holding facility, then, over, should, should we reach a point on any given day where those waters can't be released into the current infrastructure? You'll obviously hold them or release them at a slower pace, or obviously when, when, you know, the infrastructure would allow?
Yes, absolutely, that's exactly the design of it.
Thank you, Matt.
Yep, thank you.
So, that tank is there no matter what? I just wanted to clarify what we're just saying.
We're going to be putting an onsite holding tank.
Right.
How are, how large are the tanks?
I'm a lawyer, not an engineer, so, I couldn't tell you. But, what I do know is that it's going to be required to be reviewed by the city's engineer and the city's consulting engineer, Andy Reichel. And provided that they're okay with it, then we can move forward. But, absent their approval, we wouldn't be able to be issued building permits.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, on the resolution for introduction, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPaloosa?
Aye.
Oh, twelve is an ordinance of the City of Bayonne approving the amended financial agreement by and between the City of Bayonne and TFG one fifteen dash one seventeen West Second Street, Urban Renewal LLC, for the property located at one fifteen dash one seventeen West Second, which is identified as Block Three Sixty-Five Lot Nine, as shown on the official tax map of the City of Bayonne, subject to the determination of how the units will be valued and owned by the virtue of an amended master deed and a resolution fixing Wednesday, January seventeenth, at six P M in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. Would you like to move it?
Move it, like a second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
I'm happy to vote aye. This was a fifteen-year pilot that now, with the extension, only takes it to eighteen. So, you know, we took kind of a hard line when this was coming out, and credit to the council president as well, who, under a previous iteration of this council, put forward a bill for fifteen-year pilots, which we, again, talked about at the caucus. And so, you know, this, I still believe this is a step in the right direction, even though they're asking for a small extension.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPaloosa?
I, too, am happy about giving them the extension. And I like the way this is worded with the units because there were some issues back and forth between rentals and condos. So, this kind of settles that and gives them an extra three years, and I'll vote aye.
Oh, thirteen is an ordinance amending supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne Chapter Thirty-Three Planning and Development Regulations and a resolution fixing Wednesday, January seventeenth, at six P M in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. Would you like to move it?
I'll move it.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPaloosa?
Aye.
Oh, fourteen and oh fifteen, I did not receive an ordinance on, so.
My understanding is that we were provided by outside counsel, a oh fifteen was provided, removing the I H O district.
When?
I'm going to look at my email right now.
Thirty-seven minutes ago.
What's that?
Thirty-seven minutes ago. Yeah, but I'm out here. That's not receiving it before the meeting starts.
I would like to move to wait on this because the, I want to make sure that something's in there. We talked at the caucus that certain areas of town were removed. I'd like to see that in the documentation before we move forward on this.
All right, so, there's no move, no move or second on that then?
Move it to January.
So, we'll just put it on for January.
Oh, fifteen is the same thing. Oh, sixteen is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne Chapter Seven Traffic and a resolution fixing Wednesday, January seventeenth, at six P M in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place and a public hearing, a public hearing and final passage. Would like to move it?
Move it, second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPaloosa?
Aye.
Consent resolutions for communications is a resolution moved by the council as a whole ordering the following communications to be received and filed. It covers C one through C six. Any questions on the communications? And on the communications, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPaloosa?
Aye.
Officers' reports is a resolution moved by the council as a whole and is a resolution ordering the following officers' reports to be received and filed and a resolution incorporated within them to be adopted. It covers O R one through O R four. Any questions on the officers' reports? And on the officers' reports, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPaloosa?
Aye.
Consent resolutions is a resolution moved by the council as a whole ordering the following resolutions to be adopted. It covers C R one through C R thirty-nine. Any questions on the consent resolutions? No questions? And on the consent resolutions, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPaloosa?
Aye.
R one is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with Hudson County Improvement Authority for solid waste disposable services for the calendar year twenty twenty-four for an estimated amount not to exceed four million, three hundred thousand dollars for solid waste disposal and tipping fees. Would like to move it?
Move it, second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPaloosa?
Aye.
R two authorizes an amendment to the Water Sewer Commission Agreement, concession agreement, uh huh.
Before we vote on that, can I have Mr. Nichols come up and explain this in the condensed version, Mr. Nichols?
Please. Well, really, it's to allow public financing, it's to allow, it's to let us use public financing for all these big water-sour projects that we have coming online. As the council's well aware, we have a long-term agreement with the concessionaire to, they have to do roughly three million dollars, adjusted for inflation of capital improvements every year, that will easily be exceeded. One example is the lead service line project, which is, will be a minimum of twenty million dollars. Dennis Enright's here, if you want to hear how much, you know, allowing this would save us. We can, we can fund that through state infrastructure loans, some of which is subject to loan forgiveness. If the, if the concessionaire finances it, it's not only at a higher interest rate, none of it is subject to loan forgiveness, so, the ratepayer would have to pay everything. So, what this allows us is both for the lead service line program, the long-term control program, and, and other infrastructure needs. It allows us to utilize low-cost public financing. This would be, this would then be a surcharge on the water rate rather than an interest increase on the water.
And it saves us, it could be in the millions, depending on the interest rate, so, right, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
So, on R two, it's moved by Mr. Councilman Perez. Ms. Weemer, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPaloosa?
Aye.
R three is approving the redevelopment agreement between the City of Bayonne and Mahalakshmi Urban Renewal LLC for the property known as Block Seven Fifty-One Lots One Point Oh One, One Point Eleven, and One Point Fifteen.
Move it, second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
And I apologize, what properties are they?
R three?
Yeah, no, I know where we are.
Oh, okay.
What property are we speaking of? Where is that property located?
At the base.
One Flagship Street.
This is a single project at the, at the base that is being bifurcated into two due to a corporate, I would say, I want to say, a corporate dissolution or a organizational dissolution to allow for it to, to developers who were together on the project to pursue two separate
I see.
development opportunities.
Okay, and so, this amendment is, in effect, a name change only? Are there substantial provisions to the agreement?
No, it's the same, no, 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 it's the same conditions, different proprietors.
Different proprietor, I understand, okay, thank you, Madeline, I'm sorry.
Same individuals, just two differently named entities, let's put it that way.
No problem, that's great, thank you.
And your vote?
Aye.
Mr. LaPaloosa?
Aye.
R four is amending the redevelopment agreement between the City of Bayonne and Street Lock Street Varieden Urban Renewal LLC for the property known as Five Block Seven Fifty-One Lots One Point Oh One, One Point Oh Seven, One Point Oh Eight, One Point Oh Nine, One Point Oh Ten, and One Point Twelve. And this is actually for Fifty-Four Flagship Street. Would like to move it?
Is this the other half of?
This is Fifty-Four Flagship?
Yes.
The other half, yes.
This is the other half of R three?
Yep. Would like to move it?
I'll move, second.
And on R four, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPaloosa?
Aye.
R five authorizes the mayor and city clerk and/or other appropriate city officials to take any and all actions and execute any and all documents necessary to enable the city to exercise the first one-year option to renew Agreement Number C Y twenty-one oh seventy-one with A and L Disposal LLC as amended for the collection of solid waste materials for a period of one year commencing January first for an amount not to exceed one million, eight hundred thirty-one thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars. Would like to move it?
Some move?
And a second?
Second.
So, I, I just want to speak on this, and this has something to do with R six as well. I spoke to the owner because I'm still getting a lot of calls and complaints.
As am I.
Yeah, I think citywide, we're all getting complaints. And I want him to do more action to resolve these things. So, I've been promised that they're going to supervise the workers better. And if this doesn't work, I've had a discussion with the mayor that we will have to put our own person on if we have to supervise their supervisor, and then, listen, listen, what happens is, if I have to withhold the payment, I will make that suggestion to the mayor if we're not getting the right service here. Because I'm getting complaints about, I'm sure everybody's got the same complaints about spiteful things, the barrels upside down, the garbage all over the street. We had problems with the two companies before. We took the chance with this company, which was brand-new, and we saved some money. But, we don't want to go back and have the same service or worse. So, we've, I've put the owner on notice that this is a one-year extension, and I will be revisiting this. And I will make the recommendation to not extend it again because he has other options if this does not change. And I would think that my colleagues are in agreement with that. Thank you, Madeline.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
I would just like to speak up real quick. In terms of what the president, the council said, I agree. We've gotten many complaints, myself included. We were promised that it would be addressed, and that's why I'm going to vote aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Yeah, absolutely, especially given those conditions that the council president worked out. And it, in the event we have to put a body forward, I would certainly hope we'd subtract those costs. But, I vote aye for this one-year extension.
Mr. Perez?
I totally agree with my colleagues, I vote aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
And Mr. LaPaloosa?
Aye.
And R six is the execution of a one-year extension to Agreement Number C Y twenty-one dash oh seventy with A and L Disposal LLC for the collection of the recyclable materials for the calendar year twenty twenty-four for an amount not to exceed one million, two hundred seventy-four thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars. Would like to move it?
Move it.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPaloosa?
Aye.
R seven is awarding the Contract Two Personal Giordano Construction LLC for the renovations to the G. Thomas D. Domenico Municipal Pool Building for the bid price of six hundred ninety-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Move it.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPaloosa?
Aye.
R eight is authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with Sins Municipal Recycling for the receipt of the city's recycling commingled, which includes glass, metal cans, and plastics for a period of one year commencing January first pursuant to the non-fair and open process.
Move it.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPaloosa?
Aye.
R nine is a resolution, amending Resolution Twenty-three dash oh one dash eighteen oh sixty-one that authorize an agreement with Clark Caton and Hintz for professional planning services as a town planning consultant for a period of one year commencing January first, twenty twenty-three for an amount not to exceed seven hundred thousand dollars payable from various developers and redevelopers as accounts for town planning consulting services in connection with developers and redevelopments, and also to include professional planning services as town planning consulting on behalf of the city for an additional amount not to exceed forty-five thousand dollars. Would like to move it?
Move it.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPaloosa?
Aye.
R ten authorizes a site access agreement to allow the repair and replacement of the sewer outfall located at One Ingram Avenue and the Kilvan Co., and authorizing the mayor, lawyer, city clerk, city director of municipal services, business administrator, and utility engineer and outside counsel representing the city are each authorized to take and authorize such further actions as may be necessary to effectuate this resolution and resulting access agreement. Would like to move it?
Move it.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPaloosa?
Aye.
R eleven is an agreement with Donahue Geronda, Doria and Tompkins LLC for professional accounting services to act as the municipal auditors for the city for a period of one year commencing January first, twenty twenty-four for an amount not to exceed one hundred seven thousand, five hundred dollars.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPaloosa?
Aye.
R twelve is a contract with Triad Advisory Associates for consulting services related to planning and implementation of the city's community development block grant program for a period of one year commencing January one, twenty twenty-four for an amount not to exceed forty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars.
Move it.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPaloosa?
Aye.
R thirteen is an agreement, as are required and found to be acceptable by the law director with Kai Strategic Insurance Partners for professional risk management and insurance broker services for a period commencing January one through December thirty-first at a risk management flat fee of sixty thousand dollars paid directly to, by the New Jersey Jiff Insurance Fund. Would like to move it?
I'll move.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPaloosa?
Aye.[1750.47]
R fourteen is an agreement with Crivitt and Crivitt PC for professional legal services for federal and state grants and funding for a period of one year commencing January first, 2024, for an amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Move it.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Fifteen is an agreement with John T. Deduces, M.D., for professional medical services for the city uniformed employees for a period of one year commencing January first for an amount of fifty-two thousand dollars.
Some move.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Sixteen is an agreement with Clark Caton Hints for professional planning services to act as a town planner consultant on behalf of the city for a period of one year commencing January first for an amount not to exceed forty thousand dollars.
Move it.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
R seventeen is also an agreement with Clark Caton and Hints for professional planning services to act as a town planner consultant in connection with the developers for a period of one year commencing January first for an amount not to exceed five hundred fifty thousand dollars.
I'll move.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
R eighteen is also an agreement with Clark Caton and Hints for professional planning services as town planning consultant in connection with redevelopers for a period of one year commencing January first for an amount not to exceed one hundred fifty thousand.
Move it.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
R nineteen is an agreement with Alfred Dog Solutions for website design, management, and maintenance for a period of one year commencing January first for an amount of fifty-four thousand dollars.
Move it.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
R twenty is an agreement with Iglesino Webster, Wichita Scola, and Taylor for professional legal services as redevelopment land use attorney on behalf of developers and redevelopers for a period of one year commencing January first for an amount not to exceed one hundred and fifty thousand dollars payable by the developers and redevelopers.
Some move.
Second.
And on R twenty, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
R twenty-one is an agreement with Consulting and Municipal Engineers LLC, which is also known as a CME Associates, for professional engineering services as in-house engineer on behalf of the city for a period commencing January one through December thirty-first for an amount not to exceed one million two hundred thousand dollars. Would like to move it?
Move it.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Madeline, forgive me, are we on R twenty-one?
Yes.
Yeah, I have to recuse myself. I have, in my professional life, I do trust and estate planning and have a professional relationship with Dilworth, so I'm not going to
This is R twenty-two.
No, R twenty-two, I jumped ahead.
I think we skipped R twenty-one.
We skipped twenty-one, so R twenty-two, we'll go back to twenty-one.
Okay.
So that's with CME Associates.
CME is fine, I vote aye.
Okay, and Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Do two pages. Back to R twenty-one is an agreement with Dilworth Paxton LLP for professional legal services as bond counsel for a period of one year commencing January first for an amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars. Would like to move it?
Move it.
Second.
And on R twenty-one, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
I'll excuse myself now.
And Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
R twenty-three is an agreement with Consulting and Municipal Engineers LLC, which is also CME Associates, for professional engineering services as in-house engineer in connection with developers and redevelopers for a period of one year commencing January first for an amount not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars.
Move it.
Second.
And on R twenty-three, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Four is an agreement with Richard N. Campusano Esquire for professional legal services to act as a planning board attorney in connection with developers for a period of one year, payable at a rate of one hundred eighty-five dollars per hour for a total amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars.
Some move.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Twenty-five is an agreement with Chason Lamparello Malone and Capuzzo for professional legal services to act as a municipal tax attorney for a period of one year commencing January first for an amount not to exceed one hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Move it.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Six is another agreement with Clark Caton and Hints for professional planning services as the council on affordable housing for a period of one year commencing January first for an amount not to exceed thirty-six thousand dollars.
Move it.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
R twenty-seven is a contract with the Bayonne Economic Opportunity Foundation for administration of the city's community development block grant program for a period of one year commencing January first for an amount not to exceed two hundred twenty-two thousand dollars.
Some move.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
R twenty-eight is an agreement with Civil Solutions for professional engineering services in connection with the maintenance of the city, maintenance of the city of Bayonne's digital tax map for a period of one year commencing January first for an amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand five hundred.
Move it.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
R twenty-nine is an agreement with NW Financial Group for financial advisory services on behalf of the city as for the period commencing January first for an amount not to exceed one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars.
Move it.
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
R thirty is an agreement with NW Financial Group for financial advisory services in connection with redevelopers for a period commencing January first for an amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars.
Move it.
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
R one is an agreement with McCabe Environmental Services LLC for professional services as a certified lead base paint inspector for a period of one year commencing January first for an amount not to exceed seventeen thousand.
Move it.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
R thirty-two is an agreement with Richard N. Campusano Esquire for professional legal services to act as a zoning board attorney on behalf of the city for a period of one year commencing January first for an amount not to exceed eighteen thousand dollars.
Some move. Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Thirty-three is also an agreement with Richard N. Campusano to act as the planning board attorney on behalf of the city for an amount, total amount not to exceed thirty-nine thousand dollars.
Some move.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Four is an agreement with Iglesino Webster, Wichita Scola, and Taylor LLC for professional legal services as redevelopment land use attorney on behalf of the city for a period of one year commencing January first for an amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars.
Move it.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Thirty-five is an agreement with Reliable Paper Recycling for the receipt of the city's recycling commingled mixed paper only for a period of one year commencing January first with a two-year possible one-year option renewal at the discretion of the city.
Move it.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
R six is an agreement with Rutterman and Roth LLC for professional legal services to act as labor counsel in connection with arbitration hearings, litigations before the court, negotiation, and perk hearings involving various unions and the city of Bayonne.
Some move.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Thirty-seven is with agreement with Arthur T. Theobald Junior Esquire to act as special labor attorney for professional legal services in connection with arbitration hearing, litigation before the courts, negotiation, and perk hearings involving various unions and the city of Bayonne.
Move it.
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
R thirty-eight is an agreement with Timothy Moriarty for professional legal services as chief municipal court prosecutor, Stephen R. Hummel, and Landry Belizar as, for professional legal services as alternate municipal court prosecutors for a total amount contract not to exceed one hundred and forty-five thousand six hundred dollars.
Some move.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Down to the end on, first one is authorizing the mayor and/or his designate to enter into a tax appeal settlement agreement with twelve dash, sixteen dash North Realty care of Walgreens for twelve dash sixteen North Street as identified as block two ninety-seven, lot four point oh one, and authorizing the mayor and/or his designate to take any actions necessary to effectuate this resolution and resulting judgment.
Move it. Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
At two has been withdrawn. At three is authorizing the mayor, city clerk, to enter an agreement with Eileen Kane Esquire and Stephen
Skankelapoor.
Thank you. Esquire for professional legal services as municipal court, court public defenders for a period of one year commencing January first for a total contract amount not to exceed eighty-eight thousand two hundred dollars.
Move.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Madam, is the next one directing the housing authority?
It's a resolution of municipal council of the city of Bayonne directing Bayonne Housing Authority to seek new affordable housing opportunities using funds available in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Whereas the city of Bayonne, the county of Hudson, New Jersey, the city, has a long storied history of providing quality, affordable, public housing to its residents, whereas consistent with NJSA fifty-five colon fourteen A dash four, the housing authority of the city of Bayonne was created and charged with the duty of identifying, creating, safe and sanitary residential dwelling accommodations for persons of low income. And whereas this municipal council is of the belief that there is now a need for the creation of new, safe, sanitary, and affordable residential dwelling units for persons of low income, and whereas this municipal council considers it to be in the best interest of the city to have the housing authority of the city of Bayonne immediately begin identifying properties within the city's borders that could be utilized to build safe, sanitary, and affordable residential dwelling accommodations for persons of low income, and whereas the city of Bayonne has funds available for the purchase of land and construction of such housing in its Affordable Housing Trust Fund, now therefore be it resolved by the municipal council of the city of Bayonne, county of Hudson, New Jersey as follows. Section one, the housing authority of the city of Bayonne is hereby directed to conduct a preliminary investigation, which shall be completed in calendar year two thousand twenty-four, to determine whether or not property or properties are available to purchase using funds from the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund for the purpose of constructing new, safe, sanitary, and affordable residential dwelling units for persons of low income. Section two, this resolution shall take effect immediately.
And if we could move that as a whole, for the whole council, and this is what we spoke about before, trying to direct the housing authority to use the money the city could allocate to them, the eight billion dollars that's in that public housing trust fund.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
To add on, two more resolutions. This is regarding condemnation properties, potential condemnation. It's a resolution of the municipal council of the city of Bayonne, county of Hudson, New Jersey, authorizing and directing the director of planning, zoning, and development of the city of Bayonne to notify the property owners of certain property located at thirteen East Thirty-third Street, seven thirty-four, seven fifty-six Broadway, and designated as blocks one forty lots two, fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine point oh one, sixty, sixty-one, and sixty-two on the official tax maps of the city of Bayonne, that the municipal council may authorize the city of Bayonne's planning board to conduct a preliminary investigation to determine whether these properties constitute a condemnation or non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law.
Does the owner of the property know? Are they aware yet? They're being made aware by them?
No, no, they...
They do know, and I'm going to speak to this, and then, and then, Mike, I'll ask you to explain anything further, but the, our, our city director Schillender, as well as the, as well as the attorney, Mr. Micali here, has exhausted all efforts to communicate and to work with the current property owner, of which we have documentation to that. I think we asked Director Schillender, as well as Attorney Micali and his client, to work with us. I, I think we halted this project six months ago, or four months ago, at, at my, my personal request, I think with my colleagues perhaps as well, but, so as not to, to surprise, although as I understand it, there has been long, long communications here over several years, but the property owners are fully aware, they have been given multiple offers that are over and above the assessed value, even, even the market value, I might say, because I've seen them myself. I did ask Attorney Micali, as well as Director Schillender, to provide me with some documentation, to provide us with documentation that we have exhausted our efforts, we've communicated with the families, and we would now move forward with consideration, with having the planning board review this. So I just wanted to point that out to the community, because I did ask you to do that, and I very much appreciate that we gave this family every opportunity to work with us in getting this settled, so it is not a surprise to anyone involved, and I think that the community at large should know that.
So just, just so that I'm clear as to what we're directing, we're actually, the resolution should actually read that we are directing the planning board to conduct that study?
Correct.
Okay, so then, it would read, instead of resolution authorizing and directing the director of planning, it's going to be authorizing the planning board to conduct a preliminary investigation to determine if the property constitutes a condemnation or non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment pursuant to the criterion NJSA forty A colon twelve dash five, twelve A dash five.
Correct.
So this is the second step, or actually probably the third step, in a many-step process, but this was, this is the actual referral to the municipal, to the planning board by the municipal council, directing them to conduct an area need study.
Correct.
Yes, thank you, and that, that's right, we have been in constant communication, especially which property, this, is this the thirty-third street property we're doing now, or is this the, this is...
This is, yeah, this is thirteen East Thirty-third, yeah.
So this one, we have been giving offer since twenty, hard offer since twenty twenty-one, been talking about it since twenty twenty, and, and you're right, you see the, the letter from the city, we basically hit a part where we're, we need something to get this negotiation moving, and I'm hopeful that we'll be able to acquire it without the eminent domain, but the eminent domain will certainly be a help, and I think it would behoove the owners to do an agreement with us, we're giving them a better offer than what the appraised property value is.
Right, of course.
Good use of the word behoove.
Yes, exactly, I got that from you. If only Dave Solari were here.
And I think Councilwoman Weimer said it best, that what we want to do is exhaust every possibility before this actually happens, so...
Yes. I appreciate that, thank you.
That's what sending this for a study to the planning board will do.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. It's got to be moved in.
Yes, it's got to, yep.
Would like to move it.
Do you want to move it as a whole? Okay. As a whole? You want to do it as a whole? No? Okay.
I'm actually curious, is the area in any particular disarray? Is it round field site?
Yeah, it's, it is an improved property for which is no benefit to the city whatsoever. It, it is overgrown, it is half-fallen, it, it is not, it's not serving...
Pieces of the building in it.
It is not serving the city well in any way, shape, or form.
More than one, more than one lot.
Link with any tax payments to the city?
So their local taxes, I believe they're current, it's federal taxes they're behind, and there's a whole storyline with this.
And there are some fines, there are fines and fees owed to the city.
We don't want to make this a huge storyline, but that's pretty much where it's at.
And again, part, part of this what's being done for the planning board to conduct the study to see if they meet all those criterias, whether or not it, you know, would be an area in need of redevelopment.
And how many lots is just the empty lot alone? It's several.
There's several lots here, and again, what's being proposed, you know, put up in front of you, is to allow the planning board the authority to conduct their study to, again, report back to you.
It's in the middle of the block between Thirty-third and Thirty-second Street.
Okay.
All right, not as a whole. It's an add-on, I, I understand, we looked at this six months ago, there were questions I would have liked to ask had I known about it, that it was going to be on tonight, so I can't, I can't go with it as a whole.
Okay, then who would like to second?
I'll second it, okay.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
No.
Mr. Perez?
I would pleasure, that is an eyesore, that's been there, it's an ugly hole, that's disgusting, that should have been taken care of a long time ago.
Ms. Weimer?
Again, I want to thank all parties for working with me, for having delayed this for a good four to six months in giving the current landowner every opportunity to succeed and to work out an amicable agreement, so I vote aye.
And Mr. La Palusa?
This is in the middle of the block, it's a large, large property, in the middle of the third ward, the ward that I am the councilman in, and it is an eyesore, it's overgrown, there's pieces of the building that are discolored and all kinds of different things going on there. I would like to see it developed, I want some action taken, this hopefully will cause some action to be taken, somebody will buy the property, sell it, we need something done there, I do not want to see an empty lot there, and I vote aye.
Okay, and in keeping with the, we want action, we have a resolution of the municipal council of the city of Bayonne, county of Hudson, New Jersey, authorizing and directing the planning board of the city of Bayonne to conduct a preliminary investigation to determine whether certain property located at eleven dash thirteen West Forty-seventh Street, nine seventy-three dash nine seventy-five Broadway, nine seventy-nine Broadway, nine eighty-three dash nine eighty-seven Broadway, and twelve West Forty-eighth Street, and designated as block seventy lots nineteen, twenty, twenty-one point oh one, twenty-three, and twenty-four on the official tax maps of the city of Bayonne, constitute a non-condem- condemnation or non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law, NJSA forty A colon twelve A dash one at sequential, and authorizing the prevention, I'm sorry, and authorizing preparation of redevelopment plan for the property. So those are mirror...
Right, and as I understand it, this is the, a similar situation, and we have taken the same actions.
Yes.
Right, so again, we have, and I, and forgive me, because I, I don't necessarily mean we, but I do mean that the attorney for the client, as well as Director Schillender, have exhausted discussions ad nauseam to try to come up with an amicable agreement that, as I understand it, those discussions have halted due to no fault of our own, and so we are in the same situation now, and, and we are allowing for a property to go unkept and unmaintained, unimproved for, for quite some time, being an eyesore, so, it's my piece.
Okay. We can add something to it? Jay?
Not adding anything to that, no.
Was this, are both resolutions, I'm just curious, because it was read quickly, non-condemnation and condemnation, as opposed to our usual non-condemnation?
Well, historically, this municipal council has taken a stance that they will not do condemnation. Past councils, no, I'm just trying, it's not administration, past councils have been adamant about doing only non-condemnation areas, so this sends it over, there's a potential for condemnation, but, you know, if something gets worked out, it could also, it could also be non-condemnation.
We would rather not have to go that route.
Correct.
But this is an option.
And, and again, part of it too, is also, it's directing the planning board to study